Work session to order. It's Tuesday, May the ninth, 2023. It's three o'clock PM when the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, Melody Lane Bisbee, and any item on this agenda is open for discussion. A roll call. District one?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Crosby is here.
District two Supervisor English is present. District three?
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams Computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling six oh two, six oh nine, seven five one three, or eight eight eight, six eight zero, six seven one four. Conference ID two four zero, four eight zero, zero zero pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero, four three two, nine two zero zero four direction. Work sessions are a time for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. And I will add at this point, Board decisions will not be made. This is a time for comments, not decisions, when we have work sessions. Introductions. We keep a record of all of our meetings, so the best way for introductions is when a person begins to speak, that they give us their name and their title, so that the record is complete in case you want to listen to it later as to who said what. So having said that, today we have a work session on looking at the demolition appropriate for Miracle Valley's structure. Tom, I have your name here. Did you?
That's fine. You know, I did write the title of this, and it was rather simple. It seemed to me like that was the issue at hand. And it is my feeling that the demolition should not occur more than what is already there. And I would be glad to hear from Mr. Coxworth, but before I hear from Mr. Coxworth, I would like to say, Mr. Coxworth has been pretty reasonable, in my experience, which dates back to both our days with the city of Sierra Vista. And I have found him and his department to be very competent and fast-acting and so on. So although there may be differences of opinion between he and I, or he and Miracle Valley proponents, I do not believe that he has any disrespect for religion. So maybe he has concerns about asbestos and things like that, but that concludes my introductory comments, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Well, I think that we're, as a board, interested in what's going on. And we only know what we read in the newspaper, or what people send us in emails. And so could you give us an overview of why we're doing what we're doing, simply so that people will understand the process that we've taken is no different than the process we take for other things of this nature?
And thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And I do appreciate those comments, Supervisor Crosby. We have enough controversy in Development Services. You experienced a little bit of that this morning. It's difficult to make everybody happy. We do try to strike a balance. But at the end of the day, me and my staff, we are well-intended. We do look for solutions. And particularly with this property, we have been fairly sensitive to the nature of this property because of its past. I do want to thank you today for the opportunity to speak with you concerning the Miracle Valley Bible College. Supervisor Crosby did request this work session to update the board, and I'm happy to provide or provide this work session for you, sit in this work session for you. The decision about what to do with the property should be made after carefully considering all of the factors involved, including the property's potential historical significance, the current condition, the potential for reuse or redevelopment, and what's in the best interest of the county. So so how did the county become the owner of the property? The property was deeded to the state in March of 2022, which essentially puts the property under the care of the Board of Supervisors. Ultimately, the goal is to dispose of the property, which is required to be sold at auction. And any time before the property was deeded to the state, the tax lien could have been purchased from the treasurer and foreclosed on the property. Development Services assists the clerk of the board in preparing properties for the Board of Supervisors' annual auction. Preparing properties for sale includes removing dilapidated buildings, dilapidated mobile homes, RVs, trash, and debris. Because of the property's age, we commissioned a regulated building material survey to determine what hazardous materials exist on the property. And as you can tell from my slide presentation, most buildings on the property do contain some asbestos. The Bible College has been a financially distressed property for numerous years, and as a result, deteriorated over time. To prepare the property for a new owner, Development Services supports the transition to private ownership to increase the potential for reuse and redevelopment. We do this by removing as much as possible barriers to the development of the property, and prepare the property to be placed back on the tax rolls for the highest and best use. To the extent possible, we remove hazards and code violations, so the new owner is not immediately in violation for a property they just purchased from the county. The new owner will be required to obtain permits from Development Services for any proposed improvements. Simply disposing of the property at auction doesn't eliminate the problem for the county. Because of this, staff is interested in remedying as many issues as possible prior to sale. Lastly, cleaning up the property will support the county's obligation to the public to obtain the highest price for the property at auction. So we'll go over the property. It is thirty-seven and a half acres. It's owned RU4, which is minimum lot size of four acres. Legal access is from Bethlehem Way. The property along Highway ninety-two is not owned by the county. It's still under private ownership. And Bethlehem Way is on the western portion of the red box, the red box being what Cochise County is currently in possession of. The in this presentation, I will be focusing on five buildings that are circled on the screen. They include the laundry building, the girls dorm, the boys dorm, the apartments, and the dome and tabernacle. Other buildings on the property are in fairly good shape, so there's really no need to discuss that today. They should remain on the property and transferred to a new owner. This is a bird's eye view of the property, and we'll be talking about the structures that are underlined. The first one is the laundry building. It's a small structure. You can see this from Highway ninety-two. We didn't find any hazardous materials in this building. It's in pretty bad shape structurally. My recommendation is that this building be removed from the property. Neighbors have reported that it's currently, or it's often used by undocumented aliens waiting for transportation on Highway ninety-two. Last week, when I was on the property, I found evidence with shoes, water bottles, and clothing. Couple more pictures of the laundry building. The next building is the apartments, which does contain asbestos. Our recommendation is to abate asbestos that is greater than one percent. Just a brief moment about asbestos. When we do a survey of a property, they determine the amount of asbestos in materials. Anything that is greater than one percent is required to be abated prior to demolishing the building and essentially putting it in the landfill. This is an EPA standard. If there are other materials on the property with any asbestos, less than one percent, that asbestos may remain for demolition and removal. But if the building is to be remodeled, then it has to be handled by licensed professionals. And what you do with it depends on really the condition of the material that contains the asbestos. So if you remodel it, if you remodel a building with asbestos, it does increase your costs. Sometimes it needs to be abated. Sometimes it could just be covered over. So it really is case by case for each building. This building is in fairly decent shape. There has been some improvements. When the property was deeded over to the state, there was a person living in one of the apartments of this building. My recommendation is that the building remain. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The apartments, right?
Yes, the apartments will remain. You can see it needs a new roof, obviously, but there seems to be potential based on previous work that the apartments could be remodeled. The next building is the girls dorm. This building is deteriorating. We found asbestos at less than one percent, about forty-five hundred square feet of wall texture, which is significantly damaged. We are able to demolish and remove this structure. However, for a remodel, if the building were to remain for the new owner, they would have to deal with the asbestos, which is significantly damaged. Staff's recommendation is to demolish and remove this building. Couple of pictures inside the dorm, the girls dorm. Hope to trust me that these pictures really don't do the property justice. They're in pretty bad shape. The worst property, or worst building, excuse me, on the property is the boys dorm. This is a result of a fire that happened in the common area, the fireplace in the common area, and spread to both wings. We did find asbestos greater than one percent. This will have to be abated prior to demolishing and removing. And that's staff's recommendation that we abate the asbestos and remove the structure from the property. Couple of pictures from the fronts of the boys dorm and inside the boys dorm with the fire damage. And the dome and tabernacle, we did find asbestos in the dome. That asbestos has been abated. Any asbestos greater than one percent has been abated. In the tabernacle, there is wall texture about seven thousand square feet that contains asbestos. That will either need to be abated or covered over, but it is significantly damaged. Staff's recommendation is that the dome remain, but the tabernacle be demolished and removed. Couple of pictures on the inside of the tabernacle. So because of the age of the structures, before removal of a dilapidated building, the Board of Supervisors is required to consult with State Historic Preservation Office. I have submitted the paperwork to SHPO to determine if this property is eligible. They've missed a couple of deadlines for me. Today, they said they will have a determination next week. Any expenses incurred to clean up the property may be recouped from the sale of the property. So it includes the survey that we did, and abatement of the asbestos in the tabernacle. We also did some cleanup already. I'm going to point out in the pictures. So this is the southern third of the property. The top-left picture, there's a foundation. That building was taken down or collapsed. It wasn't disposed of correctly. Essentially, it was just dumped in the rear of the property. Development Services has cleaned up this portion of the property already. And the cost of doing that can be recouped with the sale of the property. So in summary, all the buildings on the property are currently open and exposed. The reason the county has this property is because it is a financially distressed property, which essentially is a financial distress is a condition in which the property cannot generate sufficient revenues or income, making it unable for the owner to meet or pay financial obligations or improve the property. Investors or developers have not been interested in this property because of its current condition. We don't know who the owner of this property will be. This property will go to sale at auction and be sold to the highest bidder. The county has an opportunity now to prepare the property for sale at auction. Cleaning up the property as much as possible increases the value of the property and gives the property a better chance of reuse and redevelopment. And that concludes my presentation.
I, in my mind, the things that I've been hearing, accurate or not, and reading, is that there's a number of people who believe that this has historic value. And as I said to them, it's not up to us to decide if it has historic value or not. But you are looking at that with the state?
That's correct. That's correct. It is a requirement per state law that we consult with State Historic Preservation Office prior to removal of any building of this age.
Okay, so you're in the process of doing that. But at the same time, you're looking at deciding, well, the boys dorm can go because it can't be saved. I think one thing that maybe is a little concern of mine was the fact that, you know, there were multiple opportunities that people could buy the tax lien before it ever went to the state. And I don't know that anyone ever even started that process, because it's not immediate. You know, you buy, and each year you wait to see if they pay taxes or not. Do you know if anyone ever started that process?
I am not aware of anyone that started that process. That list is put out by the Treasurer's Office. There are numerous people who are actively searching that list for properties of value to buy the taxes, either as an investment, or if they see value in the property for what they paid the back taxes, they could foreclose and then hold the property and sell it or develop it.
And I think there was the misconception of some of the people that were interested is that they could offer to buy it from us. And we have to do everything that the state law requires of us, and the state law requires that it has to go to auction, because they're always afraid that we will sell something to somebody that's a friend of ours, or, you know, somebody will get a kickback on it. So it goes to auction, and I don't think there's any option on that for us. So if you're thinking that at some point in time an organization can buy it, it would have to be at the auction, as far as I understand. Is that correct, Ms. Attorney?
That is correct. Once the property is deeded to the state, and the county is holding it in trust for the state, under the statutes, it has to be auctioned off.
Because with other buildings we've had to get rid of, we couldn't just put a for-sale sign on it. You know, it has to go to auction. And the reason being, and I'm explaining that, because we have an audience here, is that we're supposed to be taking care of the money that you give us, the tax dollars, and make sure that they are taken care of appropriately, and that if we sell something, we get the highest and best value for it. And so the best way to assure that is always an auction. And so we don't know who comes to the auction, you know, so that's the process. So I wanted you to understand that that's the process that we will have to go through with this one, whether or not it has historic value. It will have to go to auction. Do anything else that board members want to ask about?
I don't really have a question, but I've had a conversation with Mr. Coxworth and found him to be just on the right page with this. I just want to make a suggestion that I agree with Mr. Crosby, that we shouldn't take down the buildings, or at least any more than we feel like we have to in order to make the property stay, you know, safe, fairly safe, because we can't make it completely safe. But I don't feel comfortable about taking down the buildings. And I appreciate you want to keep the tabernacle and apartments. And I think we could keep at least the girls dormitory, because, like you said, there's not that much asbestos there, and it could be possibly refurbished. But I think we need to really probably sell it at auction closer to as-is than to clean property. I think it has value that way to the public. So that's my suggestion.
How much of that property is not really utilized by church function, or would be if they had it as a church?
The previous owner of the property, there is one of the buildings, we didn't talk about it, that he used as a chapel. It's actually in pretty good shape, nice little chapel that he was using. Obviously, he wasn't using the tabernacle or the dome. But those buildings could be reused for really anything. If purchased by a religious organization, I would assume they would maybe use that small chapel with the desire of refurbishing the tabernacle and dome. But it may not end up in a religious
One reason to clean up is to get more value. Another one is so that we're not creating a liability for the county. And so I want to know how much of this, if we put this out for auction, and it has asbestos, and it has this problem and that problem, are we keeping ourselves on the hook because we sold it with those problems as they exist? Or is there some way that you can wash your hands of it? Because again, I don't want the county taxpayer to be on the hook for something forever that we sold because we thought, well, it's the right thing to do right now. But now we're hung up in lawsuits because somebody got hurt, somebody got cancer, somebody got, you know, because of what was on the property.
We'll disclose as best as we can. We do have a two-hundred-page survey that identifies all the areas where there is asbestos. The asbestos that has been removed, we have certificates. There are septic tanks on this property, some of them open and exposed. We'll just disclose that at auction, working with the clerk of the board, that it is as-is. My suggestion prior to sale is we have one or two days where we offer the public the opportunity to visit the property, anybody who's interested, so they know what they're getting themselves into. Because it's not apparent from the road, and it's not apparent from Bethlehem Way.
Well, some people from the road think that it goes to the road, too. There's not access to Highway ninety-two.
Correct. It has access from Bethlehem Way, but not through that directly north from the church.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I have a few comments. This is one of the notices that we received. And it is signed, but I'm just going to read one or two sentences here. It says, "Many know about the shootout that happened in Miracle Valley between the newly moved-in Chicago residents and sheriffs across the street from the Bible College. It was a new church and cult moved in across the street, although this did not have anything to do with the actual Bible College." I wasn't here, so I don't know all the history. But I believe that to be the case. I have no reason to think otherwise. So, Mr. Coxworth, I have this question for you. "I've never seen any document from the county staff indicating a plan to build a new jail on the Miracle Valley property."
If you don't mind, Mr. Coxworth. So there is no plan of building a new jail on that property? There never was. It was mentioned because at these jail district meetings, several locations were mentioned. And I think, and I see a lot of familiar faces when we went to the Palominas for the jail district conversation. There is no plan to build a jail at that location.
Okay, that's what I thought. So is it true that the county will save county money by no further demolition?
You know, it's difficult to answer, only because the opportunity to acquire this property was there by developers. Would it be cheaper for the county, or the same cost, to demo these buildings? Probably than if somebody were to purchase it themselves. So in addition to the auction price, then they would have to bear the expenses of removing the buildings if they felt that they weren't reusable.
I understand. But from our standpoint, it sounds like, yes, indeed, it would save us the cost of demolition by not demolishing what's left of it.
But it might cost us in what someone was willing to pay for it, because it wouldn't be as sightly or as attractive to a developer. So you have to balance those two things, Tom.
I understand. But I'm satisfied with my outlook of it, which is, yes, indeed, we will save county money by no further demolition. I think that's a true statement. Okay. In terms of a phrase that I've heard from time to time, "the best interests of the county," which I hear from time to time, I believe that has to be defined as the best interests of the people of Cochise County. And I think, you know, if you think about it, yeah, that sounds like a good thing. It isn't the best interests of Melody Lane, or any other, you know, sub-entity of the county. The county means the people of the county. And so the best interests of the county has to do with the best interests of the people of the county. Madam Chair said something like, "we're treating this the same as other properties and similar issues." Is that pretty close to what you said?
The process, yeah.
Okay. And I believe that's true. However, it is also different because of the amount of legal expenses and other expenses towards improving the property that have already been done. So I think that that makes it different from other properties that we might have come under our purview to auction.
What legal expense?
Oh, by Mr. Harder. Harder, Mr. Harder incurred a great deal of legal expenses having to do with taxes, back taxes. And I don't know the details of that, but you'd have to ask him, and I don't see him here today.
I thought you were talking about the county.
No, no. It's, well, it was between Mr. Harder and the county doing whatever that was they're doing. And I don't know the history back then, but anyway, there was a tremendous amount of legal expenses that were incurred about this property, and also expenses to improve the property. And I believe that even though we may be handling it more or less the same as any other properties that we've dealt with auctions in the past, that makes it different than just strictly, it's not exactly the same. As far as being used by illegal aliens, probably every place around here is used by illegal aliens. I understood the EPA standards and what Mr. Coxworth alluded to, and as far as page number four, which we had shown, and you talked about having caveats to whoever ends up with the property. They're going to end up with a whole bunch of reports about it, and so on. So that's, in that regard, remove hazards and code violations. And I'd say, well, if you don't, then whoever buys it knows that there are hazards and code violations that need to be dealt with before you can do something like occupy it or anything else. You also, on page four, remove barriers to development to support the property's highest and best use. And that's very subjective, and that's fine. I think we can all understand that that's a subjective statement. Obtain the highest price for the property at auction. And Ms. English talked about this. Well, which way are you going to get the highest price for the property at auction? Is it going to be with it leveled, with no concrete on it, just solid dirt? Or is it going to be because the people that want it to restore it to what the proponents want for Miracle Valley are going to purchase it? We don't know. Maybe somebody could estimate that. I can't. But I would also go back to the best interests of the county has to be defined as the best interests of the people of Cochise County. So that concludes my remarks at this time, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, if I may, Supervisor Crosby, I agree with you. The best interest of the county isn't for staff here. It is for the people out there who own property, particularly who own property in this neighborhood. Cleaning up the back half of that property, we were thanked by the property owner to the rear, to the south of them, for cleaning it up. It was a eyesore for that person, and probably diminishing his property value. So I agree. Our approach to this is for the best So I agree. Our approach to this is for the best interest of the residents of all of Cochise County. And I've heard from many of the people that are in this room and there's a lot of interested parties in this property and it's very difficult for me to listen to any one of them because we don't know who's going to be the new owner of this property at the auction. So I can only approach this work session and approach the cleaning up of this property that it would be in the best interest of all the residents of Cochise County, particularly if the property is put back into good use.
Thank you, Mr. Coxworth.
Thank you.
It seems as though we've come to a place where we need to hear from, did you say SHPO or?
Correct. We have, hopefully they get back to me in a week. They are waiting for additional information from one of the interested parties of this property. They are trying to determine if AA Allen is of historical significance in their eyes to designate the property, to determine if the property is eligible to be state and national to be registered as historic.
So I guess that's one thing is that, you know, even if we had an agenda to put it on, whether to destroy something or not, it wouldn't be appropriate until after you have information about this.
Correct. If there's a determination of a historical significance, then there is a extensive process that the county could choose to go through.
Would that be a board decision?
I would suggest it be a board decision because it would be.
Because it sounds like we need to let people know that, you know, there's going to be a waiting period before we find out what the next step is. And before any next steps are taken, perhaps a, a work session could be had, or maybe even if you think it's a decision, that's not up to me to decide, but because the board can only make decisions in, in meetings. So if you think we need to have a work session before something is put on the agenda for a decision, what do you think? Is that?
I think, I think we might need to have another work session, but that only depends on what our result is from SHPO.
That okay?
Madam Chair, if I, if I may, first, I just want to explain because we do have an audience here that we did receive a lot of information and that information was moved forward and the board members do have that information. And I, I think it's appropriate that we have another work session after we find out what information we have from SHPO so that Mr. Coxworth, Mr. Coxworth, sorry, can present that information to the board and the board can weigh in and give their opinion, not make a decision, just give comments as they did today. Because it was clear from board's discussion here about certain aspects of what the property, what should happen to the property. If I can have just one moment, I just want to talk to Mr. Coxworth. I do want to make one other statement. I just want to provide more information. I just wanted to clarify with Mr. Coxworth. Obviously, just for clarification to the group, nothing in addition will happen to the property. We're moving forward. We're going to have another work session and then another work session will be what's the information we have from SHPO. And then the board can give further instructions at that point in time. Also, if things move forward and progress, the auction may, may, and I say may, happen this summer. So there's no specific date yet. So I just want to give more clarification because we do have a large group here. Hopefully that answers some questions that people already have. And then we'll inform the public and also the board once we get that information and schedule another work session.
Well, when you, you present information to us, it isn't really public knowledge. But when we have work sessions, then you hear what we're talking about. So I think that since there's a lot of concern, that, that would make you feel better if we have a, a work session so you know what we're hearing and what we're reading. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yes, indeed. We are still not beholden to SHPO, the historical organization, no matter what they say. Right?
I don't know about that.
We have to, we have to confer with them and they have to have a discussion with us about that.
That's fine. So, so it is yet to be seen whether we are beholden to SHPO or not.
Well, they'll provide their recommendation. And that's all it is, is a recommendation. And then with that recommendation, we can present and give more information to the board.
That's fine.
But we have to wait.
Sounds like we're still not beholden to SHPO.
Well, we, we have, we, we do have to wait for their recommendation. So we are, that's the term of beholden. We are beholden to, we, we can't do anything like today.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting to do. Actually, I was, I was saying in the future, they say X or they say Y. It's still a recommendation by them. But the, the point was that no matter what happens, it is not a guarantee that the Miracle Valley proponents will obtain the property. Is that accurate?
Correct, because it has to go through an auction process. And that's, I think, Madam Chair put it correctly. We have to go through an auction process. We can't pick certain people and individuals that we want to purchase property as a governmental entity. We have to go out for an auction and hopefully.
Even if you wanted to give us more than it was worth, you know, that's not the process. Any other comments before I close this?
I just, I need to say that you've turned out well and you've contacted us. You're doing exactly the right thing. So keep doing that. Stay involved, organize yourselves, be prepared to purchase it at the auction and the best to you. I think that's the best we can, right? Wait till you get more information.
But I think we only accept cash, so. Start, start rubbing your pinky bones. Any other comments?
I am not soliciting a vote, but I am saying that the board is, at this work session, providing guidance to the Development Services Department to cease further demolition of the property. Is that correct?
You know, I think we heard from them that they weren't going to do anything until after they heard from SHPO. All right. Before I say that this is over today, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, May the 23rd at 10 o'clock AM in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room and it will be a regular board meeting. So having said that, this work session is adjourned.